Is there a motion that we return to open session? I move to return to open session. Ms. Manning, this way we return to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Walsh, second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we return to open session. All in favor of saying aye? Aye. All in saying no. We are now at open session. The Shenandoah County School Board, hereby certified by law, called by that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters multiply assembly committee committee requirements are presented all with discussing the closed meeting, due to its certification resolution of laws, and only support public business matters as more identified in the motion of the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the Shenandoah County School Board. Each member responds as certified, when you call.
As certified. This one? As certified. This one?
As certified.
Mr. Walsh?
As certified.
Mr. Walsh?
As certified.
This one?
As certified. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Ms. Walsh, does we approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Houseley, second motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
All in saying no. The agenda is approved. We now have information items. The first one is nominations for deputy clerk of the board for the Shenandoah County School Board. Dr. Johnson, do you wish to speak to this?
Yes.
And so we will do that. We will do that in the action items. Do you have a recommendation for us?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, what? And we will vote on this in action items. Are there any questions? While we're saying your recommendations, I would like to mention what I've seen. Ms. Jeff, first of all, which is school division was is a volunteer and they actually were a lot of them. And also were in capacity as well as principal, so much as I said. Alright, hearing nothing else. Under information 3.2 Resolution condemning racism and affirming the division's commitment to an inclusive school environment for all. You'll remember we talked a little bit at the last meeting where several of us mentioned during our comments about the SBA resolutions. The resolution you have here in front of you accept and edits it a little bit to sit out. So, were there any questions on the resolution condemning racism and affirming the division's commitment to an all-inclusive school environment for all, which we will vote when we get back. Hearing none, let's move to action items. First, action items personnel. Is there a motion to approve the personnel list as presented?
I move that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Ms. Walsh and seconded by Ms. Manning that we approve the personnel list as presented. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll over please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Houseley?
Yes.
Ms. Wenzel?
Yes. Next on the, uh, that motion passed. Next on the action items, the move for deputy clerk of the board for Shenandoah County Public Schools. Is there a motion for deputy clerk for the schools?
I move that we accept the recognition of Cheryl Jett as deputy clerk for the board as recommended by Dr. Johnston.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Walsh and seconded by Ms. Manning that we approve Cheryl Jett as deputy clerk of the board. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll over please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Houseley?
Yes.
Ms. Wenzel?
Yes. Third on the action items is the Resolution condemning racism and affirming the division's commitment to an all-inclusive school environment for all. Is there a motion to approve the Resolution? I move we approve the Resolution as presented. Thank you. Ms. Manning, this way we approve the person. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Walsh, second motion. Any discussion?
I did want to say just a couple of things. I think this is an important first step, but I think it should just be considered a step. I think we need to carefully consider how we teach kids, how we model for students, and just consider this a first step. There's still a lot of work to be done in the community, in the schools, and this may be a little symbolic, but it is a sincere effort by the board to move forward and to try to make conditions better.
I think enough discussion. Hearing none, roll over please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Mann?
Yes.
Ms. Manning? Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Houseley?
Yes.
Ms. Wenzel?
Yes. Next on our agenda is our strategic planning part, and it's our plans for the year in school, and so at this point I have a little meeting up to Dr. Johnson, who can talk later.
This is, uh, I guess this is what I would say to you is this is the head up. The work of many things. School system, we're in a community. Where the pandemic first started, it was posed without the information flow was pretty important and created a question in this document. Where families, parents, that, there is, it's a big question, we get answers to those questions as things unfold. Based on what was known at that time, as you know, it was a very fluid situation. It's a very fluid situation, with things changing and quickly. We were told one thing, one thing, you knew the first of it, for example, and the next day something different. And so we, hearing the data, maybe flexible as information unfolded. As we wanted to, we wanted to, uh, the reality, I guess I would say. And it was not going to end in a, with the impact. Not just in terms of short-term goals, like some schools, but also reopening the school, and foreseeing the effect of being now to reopen as we had to catch years. We began that everybody was trying to prepare, not what happened in the middle. We presented to parents and students, there were three major options, which were that if we thought of all the social businesses, I know we were going to do the whole of it, it always happened. We will hear theories of families, these about what they think that has to be realistic and everything. One is the scenario is we can remain closed if we were, which is what happened on March 13th, March 15th, when we started. It's a strange conversation I've never had.
Yes, we all want to learn something to do.
The mic's not stretched back as far as we're in the seat, and I can't stretch my body that far, so I'm just gonna stand here and get through this, okay? So what we tried to do was some kind of scenario of everything went open, but we would remain closed, everything would continue virtually, or something in between. Because we knew with physical distancing, well, we have so much space in our schools, and if we're putting 6,000 students in school and maintaining six foot distance apart, we don't have enough space. Our buses don't have enough seats, they're all large enough to accommodate the passengers that were designed to create, and so on. So we had, so we launched another question and answer session. And that, that listed questions is now over, it's up to 90, and I know before game with the meeting today, I probably had another five or six in my head months. And so, so we can take that out to that, and also we have any suggestions, comments, recommendations, and so on. So we begin from, and if you read through those, they really are a window into our community. They give you a really good sense of what our families are thinking, what our parents are thinking, what's on the minds of our students and our staff. So I would recommend that everyone certainly read that. We also form what we call is a sort of study committee to look into other options, to go through some questions and so on. Just to kind of share a little bit with you, one of the things, for example, we considered was prioritizing based on transition years in school. Number one, recognize that our youngest learners, or what our principals call the littles, who are in grade kindergarten, kindergarten, first grade, Dr. Dr. Lee, that well-equipped, who weren't in the first full state. So, our first approach was perhaps, we kindergarten, kindergarten, first, second, third would be a priority, and get those students in as much as possible face-to-face, and then hit the transition year. That's a little complicated because one transition year here in the central northern campus is grade six. That's why we move schools, and the very southern campus, that's grade five. Same thing for high school, from age to ninth, to ninth grade. Although here on the southern campus, you transition to the high school setting the eighth grade. So one of the very first things that came out of the committee, and Mr. Keller represented the school board on that committee, and Randy Boyce represented community, as you know, she was recently elected the mayor of Stroud Borough, so she's well-connected in the community. And not only that, she has a child in elementary, one in middle, one in high school. So she had very good perspectives, but she's numb with those transition part. We reached out to the Shenandoah County Education Association, President Jeffrey, asked him for a teacher representative. He suggested Chrissy Richmond, a seventh grade teacher, sorry, not seventh grade anymore, a teacher at the Elmer Middle School, and off service again, so we had teachers represented, and I know there was a free flow of information in all those groups. So, and then we had to get, so we could answer questions about transportation, about instruction. I'm going to say at the outset, we were hopeful, and it looks very likely that we will not be exclusively virtually learned. But the couple things I want to say about that experience, number one, was that on March 15th, we were forced into a situation, we just certainly were not prepared. And that is to teach virtually, going from complete face-to-face to complete online. Our teachers were not trained for that, we didn't have the systems in place to really test it. And we're not really very proud of how I met them, but it's not because of a result of lack of effort from our staffs part of it. It's really because we just weren't prepared. And we want to make sure that when school opens in August, we are prepared to provide our children the very best we can in a virtual learning environment, because we know we're gonna have to, for some. But it was one of those first meetings where the committee, the study committee said, no, we don't think those priorities are a great priority. It's what we think, is that we should just start and say our very youngest learners, pre-k, are our highest priority. And then our K, and then our first grades, and then our second grades, and our third grades, and just keep going until we run out of space. So the proposal we have for you then, as pre-k through five, attending school four days a week, if you ever recognizing, we need to provide a quality virtual environment, and all of our teachers are gonna be virtual teachers for their student gets face-to-face, or not. But all will have some students who are virtually learning. It's hard to imagine the students that would not be in that situation, given various conditions. So we've worked from that perspective. We've met with principals on a regular basis, those senior leadership, the division, has been meeting on a daily basis. And I would say that it was one of those members, Jesus, who was a special ed, who said, when they enter meeting, she said, God, she said, right now, since today, we have 35 days before the first day at school. So, we decided, well, we're back in work, we're meeting once a week. So I said, well, we just partner up, I mean, we meet every day, and that's what we're gonna do over more closer to work. So I want to go through sharing, kind of overview, this is a discussion, it's an audit formation for our session, and we have to work with microphones, and that staff members who are well-versed in all these matters, and I think that's a topic, but in response to, you think, the new newsletter is gonna go over into the other plan, but we'll get to that later, and so on. But I did want to suggest that if they, the staff members, who are very involved in all of this, as things that add or who wants to make some comments, that we would enjoy that, so. Please, if I've been saying something, don't focus on something that I should. So on the three goals, this is not the correct, so we did that first. I think we needed to you earlier today, yeah. I apologize for the play.
Well, we're having a delay. Could I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, I know you said we were using all the space we could, and sort of I put on our back burner now how our schools are so overcrowded, and we had long-term of a soul, the full base plan, but that's one of the reasons we can't, we don't have space to put every child out of the school. And I know we've had people mention off-site and so forth, but there you get into a lot of safety and other issues, but because of the overcrowding of schools already, meant that we did not have as much space to work with as we applied to. Wherever we project the line.
Now, I said, is the PowerPoint that we have on board dogs the correct?
It is.
Oh, but you need to project it for the video.
Correct, okay.
I think so. On where you have all the capital.
That's okay, just like the teachers have been learning how to do virtual, we're learning how to do virtual school board meetings, so.
That's it.
Sure. Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, Ms. Walsh.
Fox are still having trouble hearing you.
Yes. It's sort of where you have to go left and out. I think you literally have to like.
I think that's a problem with the system.
It may be a little bit of a fail.
I feel like I can ask this thing different mile over, and hear you. Okay. Especially if anybody would rather smudge more red than they would do that. The first thing I have to know is why are the counties discussing this? The reason why this discussion is begun around the milk of Canada, and unfortunately Shenandoah County, relative to its size, has been one of the most similar cases and deaths in the state. It leads to a lot of very controversial, two cases per county, and there's for ten. Compared to the contiguous areas in Florida today, has high incidence cases, I think in places where Fairbanks has over 13,000 cases. Notice down on the bottom of the graph is it's not a population difference.
Yes.
So miles from Canada, again, from the United States, like Fairbanks, where there are over 30,000 cases and so on, but one of the things they noticed is for Canada, Fairbanks, Canada is lower, than Shenandoah County, all of your Canada, it's about and deaths, it's about that too. Without a measure of Fairbanks, of course, but you're not having that wrong, obviously, in Canada. We're far and unpractically in accounting for Canada, the case for Canada, that's for the past. If we were at a location of that, where there are no cases, it would be a different situation that we are experiencing every time. So we are very scared, or very far from notice about the city, and how they've got it. We also have other documents, so there are constantly things that have some stress in that, in the state. Standing packages, the recovery, design, restart document, the quick start copy, which is online, we're supposed to be able to help, which is 136 pages, and that are reopening the plans and planning. In addition, we have the fence guards document, which is clearly, the series of documents, they're all phase one, which is the high basis level, although there's not necessarily more alien-based rules compared to now, or perhaps because we don't have very logical phase three. In non-phase three, there's one more note that I just missed. We are anticipating people will open to phase three, and if we would, if you come up with a good design and cover, and restart up, and I'm just gonna scratch these a little bit of this. First page of our technical, it says page 11, which is the table of contents, 11 as well. And that shows you the various areas in which our program planning must align and must address. Things around facilities, all of the same in the future. So, not only are we a school division that provides teaching and learning, we're also an employer of over a thousand employees. We're also a renter, because we have a new service program in high locations. We also run our own transportation system, so we have to be aligned with all the transportation regulations. We run a healthcare program, and a nursing program, which must align. Once we add anything to say, we, in health, or in, or in, again, we are also an employer. That is that when people are compromised, we cannot report to work because, let's say they're becoming a companion, and they have to be compromised against us. They must, we must make efforts to address those issues as an employer. None of the legal laws have been waived, so we have to be all federal legal laws, the state legal laws, and on and on. So notice that we've got a school operation for student status reports, of return to the school, recovery, and, or they focus on social, emotional, LE, status is more potentially important. So around social, emotional learning, we know, based on our experience, that right-hand, there are children in our community who are living in households where they're experiencing physical abuse and sexual abuse. We do not know who they are or where they are, but it's always occurring in our community, and those students are now home and not at school. And so when they return, we have to be mindful of what we're gonna need to do to support those students. Finally, in the table of contents, when we get up to that page 55, and this page 12, they got into instruction. Resuming teaching and learning, difficult learning, waivers and policy changes, significant education. Page 15, return to school guidance. Notice on page 15, the three bullets, second one, with strict social distancing protocols. Every student six foot apart, masks, masks and face, and more face covers as required, and other safety precautions. Page 17, notice on page 17, this is phase one, phase one is behind us. However, if we were to have a recurrence and go back into phase one, we would need to meet all of these requirements. Page 18, finally we head to phase three. Notice in phase three, physical distancing is still required. So right now, we're in phase two, we're expecting to move to phase three shortly. However, that doesn't However, that doesn't put the foot off the gas in terms of physical distancing in our schools and on our buses. Another thing about this document is while it's a hundred thirty six pages of guidance, look on page twenty, this is just one example. These are like just the CDC documents. So while this document is a hundred and thirty six physical pages, there are hundreds and thousands of pages of guidance. Examples, suggestions, recommendations, requirements, and laws. I'm not going to go through more of these pages with you, but I think you get the idea. That, that, that thirty five days that Mr. Sperr mentioned. If we don't have a changing calendar, we'll talk about a little bit. We now have twenty five days before the first day of school. Twenty five days of open school. To run a virtual learning program, to provide new learning is we're directed to, to provide for social emotional learning and all data of our students. To make sure we have all the sanitation and hygiene in place, make sure we have bus routes in place, make sure our nurses are addressing our students. Make sure we have personal protective equipment for all staff and students. Figuring out where people are going to be assigned in terms of additional cleaning, additional supervision of students. Knowing students to and from school when we're stuck with our transportation and so on. And not, I'm not making excuses here as in saying, this is the reality of where we find ourselves. We can't afford to wait. Now, of the, everybody who's working on this and everybody who's focused on this, there's not one of us that would knock around here, open our doors, put all this port, and welcome back all of our students in our classroom. And that is not going to happen. Did any of the dental department update? We were told that even with the federal government's efforts to have a vaccine administered to three hundred and fifty million people. We're looking at January twenty twenty one. So we have at least six more months of this. And we have twenty five days before the first day of school. If you approve my recommendation, we have thirty four days. So again, I'm not going to keep going through that, you get the idea, you can't, I'm not going to be reviewing it. Oh, and by the way, if you're wanting to have a checklist of whether your plan needs it, there's about a four page checklist on the last couple of pages of the document. Those sections are equity, cultural competence, meeting students' needs, student family engagement, resource allocation, communications and community engagement, and oh yeah, by the way, instruction. One small section. So we have three goals in this point. Number one is maintain the health and safety of our staff and students. That is first and foremost in every step we're proposing. Secondly, support all students academic and social emotional needs. And thirdly, we want our kids in front of us at least once a week and as much as we can get them. And also provide with their wellbeing, provide with instruction, assessment, and so on. I think it's important that I share with you a little more about how events unfolded on March fifteenth. We were directed not to provide new instruction at the Department of Education. The reason we received that correction was because we could not provide for new learning for all of our students. We have students who do not have internet access at home. We have students with disabilities who need special care and accommodations to access school. We have students who have permanent English, it's not their primary language, who can't learn if all that we provide them is materials in English or have support for their language. So again, that's important. Something I left out a little bit ago, in this hundred thirty six page document, one of the things we're going to be doing before school opens. So in fewer than those thirty four days, if you approve the change of the calendar, is we have to rewrite the IP for every student in our school system. And five of the four plan. Because we need to make sure, for example, if your IP provides for an hour day of resource support and you're attending school four days a week, that's not going to work. Or if you're attending school one day a week, or maybe you need to attend school four days a week, that's not the key decision. So those IP teams must meet and must rewrite all their IP's. That's a monumental fact. I signed documents today with the Department of Special Education for over eighty thousand dollars in pay. Hours paid for teachers and special educators to write those IP's, because they have to be in place before school starts. So do we want to be in this situation? No, we do not. And so what we're trying to do is make the very best of the situation we find ourselves in. So when schools close and we could not provide new learning for every student, we have to provide new learning for every student when schools open. That has to be quality instruction. We have to assess student work, we have to grade student work. That's a big shift. And, and so what I want, why I'm saying that is I don't want, I feel like, like, because I have to talk to this, they really got to yell at me, please don't take me that way. And. And then our teachers have never been trained in it. None of it. So again, do we want this? Absolutely not. That's like the way the magic wand to make it all go away, but it doesn't work out. So the plan we put forward to you, and we, and we put this out, and again, not in detail initially, because we didn't know what it was so locally. It was interesting, I have a superintendent colleague who went from Henry County, Virginia, to Chesapeake, Virginia. And superintendents were recently online asking about what do we need, what do we need? And one of our professional organizations said, maybe we need a session on communications for superintendents. And let's talk about July thirteenth. We're targeted for July thirteenth. And he said, that's really not my big issue right now, because before I communicate, I need to know what I'm communicating. Thirty four days. So thirty four days to do a survey of our teachers. So that we can figure out who's coming back, who's compromised, who has diplomatical lead. Who's, who's of an age that they're in a critical area, they're at risk. Who's had cancer treatments and has a compromised immune system. Who's caring for elderly parents who can't work if they don't have children. They can choose other employers' pays. All employers are facing these issues. We're an employer, we're also a school division. So our plan is for, again, taking the early recommendation, the pre-cape, and kicking the one, and two, and three, until we run into space, we got to the top. Now, when we do our survey, and I'm not making any promises, because this is about, we have them. But let me tell you, if our survey shows that seventy percent of the families are going to send their kids back to school, thirty percent of them, this plan is for a hundred percent. So if I get thirty percent that are not coming back in base to base learning, then I got room for some more kids to come to school more faithfully. I can get a promise that this is based on a hundred percent. But witness, we have a math teacher on our plane, and her senior step. Is what she did, is she went home one night, and she went through our student information system, and she did an analysis of how many students we had after each flutter of the alphabet. Because we heard loud and clear, you're getting through the Cuban A. I think my children all come to school on the same day, they can't come every day. So what she did is did an analysis, my last name, now there's one with two, there are the numbers on the screen. So what my data would be, fourteen hundred and ninety four students, this is six to twelve, if a hundred percent come back. Tuesday, fifteen hundred and eighteen, Wednesday, fifteen hundred and forty one, Thursday, fifteen hundred and forty one. So we have a balance. If your last name begins with S, all of you come to school the same day. If you have a stepbrother or stepsister and your name does not begin with an S, you're going to come to school on the same day. We can make those balances. So if you're Smith and your brother's Kelly, you both can come the same day. We'll make that work. So that's why that alphabet is kind of crazy in terms, because we have any families in the division that the last name began with Y. We have no families whose last name began with X. Again, this was, yeah, this, I'm sorry, Y is twenty four. Eight was some other number. I have only six.
You don't think any certain campus or school has a disproportionate number of S students, do you?
Relative, oh god.
Yeah. I have a question. One of my constituents that we, they are, that we probably all was done with that. He suggested the work they did on Monday, because there's one day of the week, there's nine on the calendar to say, to take an equity on days of the week.
So we did an analysis. We had, I'm, I'm not checking. We did an analysis, we switched to Monday to witness five of those days that we keep Friday missing. I'm sorry, miss six, so Monday's five. Five of the Fridays, so we're back, okay? Wednesdays, we felt was problematic because of childcare. We felt that if your child never comes to school one day a week, again, these are all assumptions I have. I don't have research to show this, that it would seem more likely that we're going to want a childcare on a Friday. And we want a Wednesday. So that's part of it. Also for families, that was a birthday on a line. And then in many cases, they learned. When I was a child, every day we ate dinner together. Every day at the same time, and we'd talk about things, and we'd share it. And one of the things with this pandemic, in some ways, it has brought families back together. And having a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday with your family, if that's possible, I think is a lot better than trying to stay for Wednesday. As, as the planning day of teachers. But again, that's, I don't, I don't know.
Um, in response to the question about my campus, is it that different? With a hundred percent return, you've got a range of approximately twenty excuse difference.
So they're pretty close. Hang on, we're going to give that. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention to you is, on the web, for, because we've got a question about critical government and governor's school. Those are still, the governor's school, those are still being worked on, and here's the third plan around those. But we're careful that are thinking it, because students have to, on, in the trade, follow the, and must take licensing exams. Students who attend trickery will come their student day a week. The June first year students work their Saturday, Wednesday. Second year students work their Tuesday, Thursday. The day they're not a trickler, they'll report to their home school for their home school. So if you're a certain student in a trick program, you will attend school three days a week. You can attend, but school three days a week. Because you have classes that are possible, you have classes, we want students to have access. For all of our teachers at least once a week. Several kind of disruption for government officials, one too daily related, things too daily related with practice that is not as it is now, as they research. I know they have been still working on that skill. So considerations, as I mentioned, all of our teachers are going to have to become virtual teachers. And I don't want, I don't want this to be misunderstood, though. What we give you is the area. And this is going to be a, a line set shared for many of our staff. So I'm a fourth grade teacher. And I have twenty two students on my roster. I can only fit sixteen in a classroom because of physical distance. So I have six more, twenty two, that are going to be not be able to be in that room and that corner. But they're adjacent to that room, working with a parent professional. As a teacher, I'm planning instruction for those six. I'm not sitting in a locker room at all, to sit on the place to be held all day. For my students, so just like now, if you're a elementary teacher, they use a system called rotations. Every elementary teacher, every, every uses rotations. And so the students in their class move from station to station, learning different things, using different devices. So that teacher is playing that instruction, but it doesn't mean that the children are in a parent professional who are doing their work stuff. Or maybe when they're doing, um, reading, or maybe when they're doing another instructional activity. I have planned that as their teacher. There are my students, I'm checking in, I'm touching basement. But also, what if some of those who are very students didn't come back to school? Those were also rest students. So now we're twenty two who are learning virtually, sixteen are in a room, four with a parent in a room. Um, so what I have to do then is make sure, this is where our learning management system comes in. Is that's really the modern Bible for teachers. It's where the instructional materials are kept, so that kids can access. So whether I'm running virtually from home, or in my classroom with my teacher, or next door with my parent professional. My materials are all in the same place. So if they're in the beginning, then it comes back, and schools are forced to close, we transition into a totally virtual world. It's not like the US marks fifteen, but we had no preparation, and we're in over there. So again, trying to, trying to pin down that. But paying time to teach and teach, and to prepare them for that world, is going to require, we're recommending at least two weeks prior to starting school. So there's a calendar adjustment. We want to move to start at school from August fourth to August seventeenth. Some people have said, or read this in other places, well, why did you start like, just go back here for two? Well, what if schools are going to close again, what if? Well, if schools really close on November first, but they're the other day. And we've waited until September ninth to come back to school. We've lost, we've lost half a month. So our plan would be to come back on the seventeenth. So what happened to our school during the pandemic? Recognizing school as Monday through Thursday in person, if you're pre-cape, you're five. It's one day a week, if you're six through twelve. If you have an IP, or you're first, an English language learner, and you're only level one, you might be four days a week. Some students with disabilities might be four days a week, depending on what the IP team decides. Um, we don't see that as a major impact. And if I showed the animals, and I'm a sixth grader, and my day to come to school that week is Monday. And if I showed the animals and I'm a sixth grader and my day comes to school that week is Monday. I'm not going to the school, right now, because I'm a bigger, closer to the school, like activities. So we don't see that as a major impact. But we're recognizing that school be helped there. The next one, we make that sum of that time from this loss by the line of story. But then the other day, if we begin at the end of the year, I just extended by two more days. When schools close and strengthen. School age, show of a staff. This is been talked about a lot. I've got another question, does anyone have any? If I were a teacher of the grade. And I can't come to work because I don't have childcare. And I can trust my sixth grader and home alone. Remember, we're also an employer. We're not just a school system. We're not just instruction, we're an employer. And I can provide support for that employee. By letting their children or having their children attend four days of school that week. And that lets them come and teach other kids who can't come to school. Or who won't come to school. Or who do come to school. We are much better off. There are a hundred and four students on the central campus of employees in grades six through twelve. A hundred and four. The southern campus there are eighty-eight. The northern campus there are eighty. So by allowing that, if everyone chose that, if. Then we would not be taking slots away from other six through twelve grade students, we can accommodate. And we can provide for our employees so we can maximize our workforce, so that we can maximize the number of students coming to school plus. We're also looking that if you're an employee. And your children are coming to school four days a week because you're an employee, you can't come to work because of childcare. You're not going to ride a bus. Your parent brings you to school. So we just freed up. If everybody chose that, two hundred and seventy-two slots on our buses. So we can transfer, transport people. So yes, it's, it's, it's a perk. But it's a perk that might save our kids, in my opinion, was to serve other kids. And create spaces over us for freedom for the kids to come to school, they don't have. Two hundred and seventy-two count with Y, six through twelve. A hundred and four to seven, for central campus. Eighty-one at the southern campus. And eighty at the northern campus. They can have those numbers that they will want. Transportation. We can't carry all the workers. We can accommodate a lot more in our buildings than we can transport. We did get a permission from the health department, it's not permission, they don't give permission. But we said to the health department, well, you know, the real issue with buses is kids can't visit from distance. You can't be six feet away, otherwise your bus hauls ten kids. So seventy-seven passenger bus hauling ten kids, it's not a efficient system, nor does it necessary. The health guy would like to say, if you wear a face covering. You can be less than six feet from somebody else. So. If you're going to ride a bus. You're going to need to wear a face covering. And we've given approval to sit one per seat. We just double our capacity to transport kids. If your siblings are coming to school too. They can sit with you on the seat. We now added another few percentage during the past. We call forty-six hundred students in a whole year in a given day. We're looking at hauling somewhere just above two thousand. Now. That's a meal ready because. If you're six, twelve, you only come to school one day, so you refuse to afford. Or some fraction of that, so yeah, trying to just remind that transportation needs. And we believe. That if the only way you can get to school is if you provide another transportation. We're going to try to make it so you can get to school. But if you have to have a bus, we want to make sure that those bus drivers come to the campus a little bit immediately to get there. But would the average do that, probably not a hundred percent. But we're working on a system that's fair, equitable, and the promise to keep the best we can there. Neil. I think about my space. That's really a natural issue, I don't know how many kids I have, I don't know how much space I have. And sometimes we worry about the size of the beginning of classrooms at home. They can register, making sure that they're back to where they're supposed to be. Um. Thirty-four days. For twenty-five days, depending on what we do together. Staff. All of a sudden, you buy a system. In a classroom that students are not in. I might not need to be at that high school on that day. I could be able to go to the middle school or something like that. So staff resign the locations as they're needed. The teachers and certifications that we both decided within certification areas. That's, that is we have from this day. We don't want middle students to have to, what we have back up. If the only space we have to allow fifth grade to come to school every day. Is by adding another middle school, which is almost certain, sure, that that's not the only case. Then, um. We're not going to have middle school teachers teach them. It's going to be like again, the southern campus. Fifth grade teacher, who don't know them, but they're pretty good. But I know I saw that a while today from a preschool, the teachers were worrying. But what if, you know, because I'm a middle school teacher, I'm going to have to teach them. Obviously, it's difficult. Because those educators will be, will be setting you up for those. Now, some people have said. That's horrible, that's terrible. My response number one is where will I be next year? It's middle school. The other thing is. That if that's the only way they can attend every day. I would think we would be supported. Um. So. That's a part of it. But we're required to do health checks every day. Mom and dad are going to have to do health checks before the kids leave the house. We're going to have to do health checks when they get to school. Who doesn't have a health check? We're going to incur, but we've got that coming. Um, and then communications, and then I'm going to. Um, so again, here are just some of the things that we're working on now. Our principals are getting to talk with our staff. We've tried to keep people on the loop, we've tried to get information out of other scenarios. Each day, the things away, we're trying to get more and more firm, our plans and stuff. So one of the things that's coming up very shortly, a survey. Again, I use the word very shortly, is that out enough, it's coming tomorrow? Or Monday or Tuesday, or maybe Wednesday? I don't know. But after we draft the survey, we're going to have those ones ready to roll out. But we've got a survey for our families, and we've got a survey for our staff, we have two surveys for operating. Um. Information, information, information. Uh, I gave your copy of an email I received today. Of somebody who works across different school divisions, saying. That we're a lot further ahead, and we're sharing a lot more information than they do. And it's always a point for criticism, for our creativity, we share too much, too fast, not involving people. Twenty-five days, thirty-four days. And you've seen the, the conditions that we have to meet. We have to have every I T meeting before school starts. That's lesson one about me. If I said to this, there are how many? Do you want to share, should you tell her right now? So what I'd like to do is. My plan was to share with you. The, the calendar suggestions. Overview of our health plan. But I want to just, I, I'm going to pause now and just ask you for your questions and thoughts and ideas. And then, uh, if we get into the health plan arena, I'll go ahead and we'll pause now, and then let our supervisors do the services. Uh, providing overview of that, but let's go ahead and pause there and get any questions, suggestions, thoughts, ideas. Um, at this point, I think that would be all for staff. Health staff.
I have a suggestion before we even start the suggestions. Um, would it make sense for us to go back to the beginning? And if somebody has a comment about generally the whole plan that you presented to us, start with that, and then maybe go by. Go through it page by page, so we're not jumping around.
Sure.
Um. It's just an idea of a way to be orderly about it. My notes are all. But I have, I have three different notebooks that I have to use, so, um.
By the way, next one giving us this document, I have a whole, a whole lot of things to pay in this, but I have gotten. And also the other thing about teaching. Okay, so, um.
I'll start with just sort of a general comment, well, two. One, thank you for all of the hard work on this, especially Gabby, I got a compliment from one of your mini members about. You could tell she was a math teacher.
Wow.
Because of having all the numbers ready and available. She, she, I appreciate it. Um, I think one message for families is. This is not going to make anyone happy, not going to make anyone one hundred percent happy. But. It's a really tough situation that we've never been in before. So I hope, I hope that they're willing to give us a little bit of grace as we support. But having said that, I also want to let them know that. The rollout of school for this coming year is not the same as how we ended last year. I think a lot of the parents who are concerned about the fall. And doing some of it virtually comes from. Sort of the lack of what we had in the spring, and I just want them to know that it's going to be different. But as you said, our learning management system is basically going to be a file cabinet that they have access to. It's basically like having your teacher's lesson plans and ditto's and everything right in one place, so. There's going to be a lot more support, a lot more resources. Just a lot more suggestions than there was at the end of last year, so that was it for the general comments.
Thank you for saying that, I think that's very important, but this will, it will be better than. And, um, and I know teachers worked really hard, and I think they were doing really good things, and also. I saw instructional assistants who were sending those to students and all that, but now they'll be, be able to be trained to do that. And I know a lot of teachers were frustrated too, because they thought one thing. They needed to know. And I hope everybody heard this, Walsh's comments at the last meeting about being kind, but to everybody, I, I really thought that was.
Impression. Okay, so how. I just think we looked at across the nation, outside of the country for ideas. Um, and, and settled on this plan as feeling like it was the best fit for our county. Was there any other similar plan? Were there a couple that would have worked, and if there were, why did we not propose that? To our residents prior to drafting a plan and deciding that this one was the best? I saw that Montgomery County published their plan. And that was based on a survey that they did, which was answered by nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight people. And I think fifty-six percent of the people for elementary school, they were given the option of. Four half-days of elementary school or two full days. Fifty-six voted for half-days, boom, you're going to school four half-days for elementary school. So, but. While, yes, there are forty-four percent of people who didn't vote that way. It, you know, you got that buy-in, so you, they don't have the problem of, nobody asked. The work that happens there, if we dare to come and turn it out, is what is coming up. As their. As, yes, they are. Our transportation, our transportation. Our transportation market is priced at six billion dollars. Of that six billion dollars, it's fuel, rockets, airports, buses. And our county is long and narrow, and we do not have a tax department. So to do like two, again, we just don't have the force. Our gear is back running with nine hundred thousand dollars. From that, I have to buy a TV. I have to take those pictures, I mean, all kinds of. The flexi-blacks, the diapers, the tables, the key, our little keypads in our cabin, we certainly got that resource. I'm not specifically saying we should have used their model, I'm just saying. Were there two models that could potentially work for us, along with our county, et cetera, et cetera, within our finances? That could have been presented, or was this the only one that you all could see making work with our particular constraints?
I'd rather follow the other model, uh, with easeable, physically responsible. Um, and could maximize our time, we actually have to file. And give permission.
Yeah.
Because we're doing more than what is in the guidance of the. This guy was talking and said pre-K through three. So again. More remember, parents will have initial committee that are so involved in their communities, we really create clear. You need to, you know, there need to be ninth grade or sixth grade, it needs to be pre-K and K and one and two and three, so we got that concept. Although, now I had a parent who, you know, raised it and started again, it's in our comments, so nothing to hide. And if you're, what about my child, is going to UVA, they're getting here, they're academically inclined. And you're only going to have them in school one day a week. Well. Number one, I didn't decide pre-K through three was our priority. That's from city apartment education, that's from the government. That's what we have to meet. Now, four times, we have flexibility with it. But the challenge there is the kid going to UVA. Maybe he won't be doing that, or it's going anywhere. So again, but you know, you know that so much of teaching and learning is the relationship between children and the teacher. And that's absolutely essential when you first enter school pre-K. So again, it was kind of taken to pieces, and I think we had to meet all those. Where the streets was a blast, it was kind of construction, didn't even lead to come up to the microphone, sorry.
I don't know about being negatively reinforced, but I have nothing to add. One of the last things I'll get here today. Um, I think perhaps to flesh out a little bit more into what's in with that. So, at this, in the room, some things we thought about were. I said, and everybody, you know, that's not working, but then we talked about like the AV, that's the one, two days a week. Um, and how many kids could we get in that way? So we thought about different models, like full days, half days, alternating days. Then on top of that, I mean, this, Dr. Dawson was saying, pre-K to three, six and nine. As a focus, and have them come like all day, every day, or as many days as we were able to. And then when we ran the numbers. Gabby found we could get six grade levels, you can get pre-K up to five. And this is the way to get the most kids in for the most days. Without costing a twenty-dollar transportation budget. So the answer to your question is yes, there were those different models, and it kind of evolved, there were times we talked with people, and they certainly did that. That community group, where we were going, oh, seems like, I don't know, this lot just kind of came, we did everything. Thank you. No, I, um, I really appreciate all the explanation. Um, I kind of already surmised what the answers were. But I was asking so that for whoever's listening, they understand that. It wasn't a decision made without considering other models and that taking into account. Our geography, our financial situation, and all the rest have been considered, and that there were, in essence, no other options to offer. For the public to weigh in on. Correct?
Correct. I mean, I would also say that I'm getting information that says other divisions are looking to process this here, and that we're far ahead. And bad and proud of, not because we did something.
Some of them have already published their plans.
So we're, there are other people who were hit a lot, so, you know. You know, very proud that we got as far as to have. We, yeah, there's still questions that are, that are unanswered. Like what are transportation rooms going to look like? I'll give you a little insight into that, just so you can kind of. So when you are parent of a kindergarten, and they're coming to school four days a week, in front of the bus. How important to you is that the bus comes the same time every day? Do you want to catch the bus today at seven o'clock, and tomorrow at seven thirty? And the next day at seven forty-five, and the next day at seven fifteen? Or you want that bus there at the same time every day? I would guess that you want it there the same time every day. So that means that when I have certain outfits on Monday, another person's the other day, Tuesday, and Wednesday. My routes are not going to look like the event for those people. Essentially, you're going to need to get yourself two routes. If you're riding the bus at six or twelve, we have our own maps. So again, that's just something, you know, we were talking, it's like, yeah, that makes part of sense. You can't, you can't get your kid out of there at four hundred times. That's, um, I would be proud of that.
Well, with this, with this plan and understanding that it's the best possible scenario, I also like to think of it as the floor, as the governor's tallest. This is the absolute minimum we are willing to provide at this point. But every time more space comes available, for whatever reason, we're going to go to the next group. Because I cannot even tell you how worried I am about the sixth and seventh graders. And I don't have a sixth or seventh grader. I am.
Which happens to be your example for the teacher who couldn't leave her sixth grader at home.
Right.
Which I wish about everybody else.
I'm, I'm worried about those sixth graders.
We are, uh, so, no. Everything moves in a trend forward and works forward. It's not the end.
Right.
It's just that I, I have such an archive of it. Sorry. Which I know I probably shouldn't do. And it's, it's heartbreaking. I wish I could make it all the way, but I'm just. But, um, right, this way, this is a whole community being, uh, taking a, awesome, everything, I draw from the moment you came in. And I think it's, when you kind of break the benefit school, what school would look like? Uh, using one of the best practices that we could use, that we're standing to the proximity of it. Is it perfect? No. There'll be those who say this is not fair. There'll be those who say this will never work, and they all might be wrong. But the bottom line is this, if everybody, every professional, I mean, yeah. This is very brutal, wonderful people, but that's what they did. Uh, just studying education, every one of those folks went into the place that was the best and we can do for our kids. And let's start with what we believe to be the proper, which would be per day. At one, in one moment, yeah, I think, I'm sure, and I was the previous one as well, is, you know, what it has to take, I love the middle school. I know that is the environment that, that needs attention, about this, this, that, or the other. I would leave them online. And, and I think, uh, we need to put in parts of the past, but all we can do is, uh, but also the fact that we need to, uh, try to find ourselves, well, to, as things develop, we certainly consider that in our, because there are these. Is that telling everybody how we start the school year in office? Does not mean that's going to make the school year, that, that, that. We would be, that's just all, what perhaps you're talking about. The foster, you know, saying, well, the main, uh, was very hard on a lot of people. That, to, to, uh, a little bit of all, uh, and, uh, is a little bit of.
Is there, going to, now we're on the middle school thing. Is there an opportunity for those students who are studying, studying virtually on their days at home to be able to virtually join a class? So that a parent can have some sense of accountability? Not, so that if Timmy doesn't get on the class, then the teacher can say, hey, just FYI, Timmy wasn't on the video Zoom class today?
So the challenge in that is that frankly, we don't know for sure approximately this 33% of the, but 1% of our population, we believe do not have internet access. We're not aware of that. So our management system accommodates that by collateral students, it comes to hotspot. We're going to hotspot to all three of our campuses. So we want to have students that are part of our, our, what it means is that with their advice, we provide them. There's, you know, that the mommy didn't come to get groceries and travel. And they pull into the parking lot, maybe they swing by Central High School. And they download all the work that Johnny's done, and upload the new work that's come from the teacher. Uh, for that week. So while that's possible for some, Miss Manning, it can be a requirement because we know some can't. Until we have wide, I, I could be, broadly, a network access everywhere, then we can assume anybody has. So those will be optional kinds of things. We're also asking our teachers to have office hours. So the students can both, can contact them, phone call, email, when they're having difficulty. That's why we also want the business that faces command at least one day a week. So that they can, you know, it may be that you don't need help with English lessons, but being a lot of help with the man, we're hoping to be able to give those students some special access to the teachers they really need. Also keep in mind, we're trying to maintain, we're committed to maintaining all of our electives. Music, art, drama, those things that cause, that's where a lot of things, giving our connections fall. And there is creative areas that, you know, pop the light and somebody have race. Which also means we're not even talking about that player. So, but we still don't know what that is, or if you're happy, if you're the weakest package, which is hell. But essentially, that is all we're holding right now. If you follow the national media, it doesn't look good for contact sports. And, you know, if anything through this process, I think I'm much more a realist. Is I do not anticipate contact sports this fall. Now, I hope I'm wrong. I sincerely hope I'm wrong. I just don't see how it can happen with all of this. And we're seeing infections in college programs, I think it was LSU, where three players tested positive. I just read an article that five students attended a graduation ceremony. And they tested positive following their graduation. I sent that to my principals, and I said, thank God, that was not our story. Thank you for everything you did.
But going back to Ms. Manning's question on synchronous learning. That was the new term that I learned, so I had to use it. There's no reason teachers can't do that, though.
So you said that it would be optional, or you couldn't make it a requirement that they attend class virtually. But if a parent said, better be on virtually and can be.
Well, maybe you could just, so let's say that I'm a family, so we're sorry as a teacher. And we're doing a weekly lesson, but then the kids are missing. So all of the kids would be that, maybe I'm filling that. And I put a couple of that in our management system, or they can watch that. Or maybe I'm learning a difficult problem with, I was going to pick a map. So let's say I have a difficult problem with physics that I can't solve, and I know lots of kids have that problem. I don't know, maybe I would be listening to them. So how do we work through that, that they can watch? Like maybe the ones that can, you're really real talking, and the ones that can, can watch through it.
And I think we're talking a little bit about two different things. You're talking about making sure they get instruction and clarification. I'm talking about parents being able to have a resource. Timmy, I told you to be on the online, and I talked to your teacher, and you did not check in online. What were you doing? So I'm talking about it as a parent resource for those middle schoolers who are fortunate enough to have intercept, internet access. To give them maybe a little peace of mind when they have to leave their sixth and seventh and eighth graders at home alone, potentially.
Well, as a parent, you will be able to access that. And you'll be, that one with this one we have currently, you'll be able to access that for all of your children in my place. Let me ask this, um, how when you create a schedule where your products are always worth it? Really? Yes. What is, what do we find out that's not always necessary?
Could that be office hours?
I, my, you know, you have to.
If we do two Fridays a month or something of that nature, is.
I think the answer to that would be if we find that's not necessary, absolutely. However, I use examples, our instructional technology supervisor, Tim Taylor, he was taught for 12 years. In a budget environment, he does not consider himself an expert. So I think, I want to be careful, because I don't want the quality of our education to suffer because of our desire to have kids in school, why? I'm certainly, this, they were planning. How are we on? Our teachers report to work every week every day. And, and the other thing is they're going to have to plan clearly. Meaning, and, you know, as a high school principal, there's so many side ones in a high school in particular. But we need our teachers planning together, so that, for example, all of us in here are the fourth grade teachers in the division. I'm not creating all of my, I'm using some parents and some others. And she's your mom, and she's your mom, and I'm doing this for, I gotta have time as a gap back. Because my planning for the next week must be there on Friday. Because I have four days, five days of virtual learning coming up. If we find that's not needed, we can revert to doing. And I think Paul said, and it's like, and it shouldn't be, it doesn't, um, so, secondly, the vision, you want our teachers, all the fourth grade teachers to be planning together, we certainly have to get it done in the early version. Uh, but I think that's a good idea, but, um, yeah, I think I just said, that's all, we're on the council. Right. I, I would create all of this, absolutely. I mean, for example, again, I hate to say that, instead of putting anybody's coach up. But once we do the surveys and we know who's coming back, and we know what we're for, and who's a summer. We may wish to come back and say, hey, we can now create sixth grade every day, four days a week. We're all for that, but again, we've got to be careful too, is just looking at all the planning going into this. Like ten days or four days, which are standard? That's going to take, I think, that's going to take a lot of work, uh, in the short run at times. So we're, we're certainly open to that, and we would like, like to do that.
And it's easier to add, than it is to start with something, and then you've got to take away. And I have fun with all that art. Yes. Speaking of which, I'm glad to hear that we want the farmers, exactly as rough reductions, but I think that's going to be a big thing. Uh, I know there was a newspaper article where once you pretend we're technical farmers, people to teach regular classes. And, and, you know, not only were the farmers, anyways, but I, I didn't have that, to be honest.
Now, they look different.
Why, and that. And maybe the same ones won't, we'll have to watch because there's just so many things to think about. Um, my comment on the overall plan, um, I'd like to know all these little details of it. I'm like, some of the parents have emails, I'm going to do this, 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 and this. But I've tried real hard to take comfort in the fact that we've got people, school board member, we've got a parent, and we've got a really good staff. So I'm trying to, even though I have all these little things, I'm like, I'm trying to say, and I know a lot of times it's going to be this. Because I've heard about it coming in every week, it's compelling. Thank you very much. But, um, I don't, I don't like everything about the plan, but, you know, I'm willing to support what group has come forward.
As part of our survey, spring, boy, you move back to the, um, planning day. Oh, part of our survey asked the question, would you prefer Monday, Wednesday, Friday as the day off? We would rather.
But again, like. You like, parents who, for the process. They wanted, but the only answer that woke up, we don't want to know. Because they.
That's a small subset of our population.
12%. What I would buy on it.
So there are four other people who, who, who make a difference too.
But it's, you know, just, you still are not.
Even if every AP student at 20%, they wouldn't win the majority of the choice.
But what if it's 55, 48?
I'm just thinking of ways to give parents the opportunity to lay in, you know, take some pressure off of you.
I have a question that goes, it's sort of to the general plan. And it, and it's about space. And I know we calculated how many could fit in, and we figured out what grade levels that is. And we figured out what their last names are and all of that. Was, were the principals used at all to take a look at their individual spaces and figure out which, you know, how many they could fit, what creative things they could do, you know, whether there were barrier type options? Um, that kind of thing. And then the second part of that question is using other spaces as classrooms, not classrooms. Um, auxiliary gyms, um, the old gyms at the high school, the forums and the stages at the middle school. Was all that looked at as possible space for teaching?
What we started with were the elementary studios.
buses, I've now increased my opportunities for parents who have to have transportation. Because if you're a employee and your child is not a teacher, you're not going to take any space on the bus that someone else can use.
Actually, the most compelling point is that you're allowing a teacher to return to their jobs and they can teach the rest of the day. And again, it's not an ideal situation. And you know, all parents have to deal with this, this state here, this travel here. I think to me, that's the most compelling.
That's what I was gonna say too. It gets the teachers physically in their classrooms five days a week so they can do the job that they were hired to do. That doesn't discount what Marty said because I heard from a businessman today who said, "Okay, I understand that these are essential employees for you, but I have essential employees as well and I'm worried about them not showing up if their kids are at home." So it is, it's a legitimate concern, but, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be offering.
These are, these are important.
Right.
And except for some, five hundred teachers are in this situation. That's fifty teachers. If I started in the future, I don't even know where the school is. So if I were going to work, if I were an employer, they have to, many employers do it for five, for nine, if your child cares. Whereas this is school, the difference is that this is part of our workforce and you've got to support them. The other thing I would say just began not overpromising, but for communications with Clarkson Brad, that's really something we're doing on time. So that's a conversation that's a great, so there are teenagers who are, there's many possibilities to be made. But you know, reducing all of our space for school, we need to use all the space for school, not getting, uh,
So no, no. So the teacher who has the sixth grader who gets to come to school four days a week, this might be oversimplification again, so stop me if I'm wrong. But in my mind, if you have your number of students that you're now seeing four days a week and they're all chopped up into small bits, which smaller class sizes mean more one-on-one time with that teacher, et cetera. So that's a plus. So more time will be spent with your child on that one day than would typically be spent on an average, typical, normal pre-COVID day, potentially. But they'll be teaching basically the same lesson for four days in a row because they're teaching it to each little segment of their class. So the idea that if another, if a sixth grade student gets to come all four days, yes, they have the opportunity to get more help and to ask more questions potentially face-to-face, but the lesson plan's being reviewed in that classroom will essentially, for the most part, be the same for those four days of that week. Am I wrong in thinking that way? Or is it kind of right or? Cause I'm just thinking like, it's not an inequity of instruction if, other than you get it drilled in your head three extra times.
So that makes sense? Yeah, so that's, that's, I think it's a little stronger. Just like you said, order, but my name, but the child on the report comes on Tuesday is working on Tuesday's work.
Okay.
So again, it's, it's, as you said.
Okay.
And there would be the opportunity, as you said, for them to be helped by some, like the government supplement.
Right.
African, they go in and help people, so. It could be, really be an advantage to the other students because they can learn from their colleagues and from sometimes.
So regarding, okay, so now I hear what you're saying, Mark, and now I'm thinking of it a little differently. Because I'm presuming that the in-person instruction for each day of the week would be the same for each student who comes in. But what you're saying is the teacher will have a lesson plan for five days of the week. And on Monday, we're gonna study subtraction. And on Tuesday, we're gonna study addition. And on Wednesday, we're gonna study multiplication. And on Thursday, we're gonna study division. And so, so is that, is that right? It's not like, okay, subtraction's gonna be our main focus this week and the addition and the multiplication and the division are gonna be virtually learned. I'm gonna help you with subtraction while you're in class with me. I don't know what we do when I have, which.
Do you want me to do that?
Okay.
So on the left side, it's. So when, so when I see him gets faced with this, we may need to run the lab. Because you are not going from home, so I may need to add a few more bags for Monday. On Tuesday, I'll do a nap, I don't remember the order, but it's on that, before those children in that class, they're walking or something else.
Okay.
And so another subject there is like, I need to order a supplement. You know, part of the, I don't know, persuasive estimate. Or we need to prove students, I'm not gonna be Tuesday, please stay perfectly on the top. Now, when kids, that's your experience, but you're gonna be doing something different. That's why, that's why I'm not necessarily, teachers be, okay, I'm not as experienced as you. I'm not teaching face-to-face and I don't plan a virtual lesson over there, so it's a separate. And I've got the kids right here, one year, but they're four years. So it's, it's all one, it's all one plan and some will just be accessing it this way. Some will be accessing it this way. I'm gonna take advantage of my face-to-face time. Maybe how, this problem areas, not maybe the individual ones, because as you said, some of those breaks will be quite small, which allows for. That, that is part of the discussion I would love was to maximize the time, time of face time and also maximize the support for the project.
And as a teacher, I would be overwhelmed if I was starting school, this plan or any plan for seventeen. What do you proceed during the two weeks of planning three through fourteen to help teachers? Not to be overwhelmed and, and do whatever that you are, that we are suggesting. First, you have to start the year out of hospital.
So a couple things, and we probably have to, we, we still have to say. Couple things, one is, we're learning about tests. We're not gonna do user tests, we're not gonna take tests. We're not for making sure that you are well mentally, that you're supported and you're learning and that you're talented. That's our focus. And so we gotta get away from this mindset that I'm preparing kids for some tests and some things like that. And we're gonna try to ensure that teachers understand what you're saying and believe in. That's number one. We have been told that information will be waived if we start school under the age of thirty. For the state, terrible blowout, I had to say. So that's number one. Number two, make sure that they're comfortable. So I'm gonna go back to the virtual Virginia session and then this got us off the minute. There's a section lying in here on virtual Virginia, this one. This is actually related and some teachers did not like that session. That session was all about the ability of teaching in this environment. So they don't. Now, some of them focused on the tool, not the theory. But, yeah, so, so I've learned a lot from that extent of people who completed that course. But I'm going to get already this something, knowing. And then not, making sure that they're comfortable in their environment. That I'm not having a hell of a kid that feels supported, they feel supported, I feel confident. And so that's gonna be our real focus then. Also, we have been taught, why is it hard to play with your child? See, that's not something you have when you talk, you, you didn't have that. And that, playing time, really, it was a model for our network school. The teachers who teach at our daughter's school, each part of the day, and then support research and planning after midnight and four days a week. And then every practice, you know, they're constantly playing together. And then really, what can they, and they're, it's, 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 for that, for our team. It was this important, uh, and driven, so that's the help. Is your brother, let me direct him back to that front.
Okay, and then, well, how are we gonna assess students uh, from March thirteenth? I mean, the student will come to us on August seventeenth. How are we gonna assess that gap? And I know it's gonna be there. I mean, I mean, I, you know, you know, it was what, nine weeks, like approximately, first of mine? I mean, where is the student gonna be? And how's the teacher gonna assess where to start the new school?
So we, that's one of the things we do every year is a benefit report. We do assessments to determine what kids are interested in. I, I know as a teacher, I always said, part of the beginning of my year, and then, oh. We don't know yet what students have lost. I know there are companies out there that are currently at money, selling. A survey loss, when the measure of that loss is the product of the company selling. But returning with weight, that kind of thing. So we, we just have to sort of gather power, we have the pre-day powers, we have, um, the IRE assessment, we have the pre-day, we have five. We have a lot of assessments for the purpose to gauge that. So we can, we're going to continue to use those.
Um, one thing I would add to that at this point too, is you know, we got a assessment for, um, other very large instructional team, or HHS, or they're a math, or they're virtually with teachers in summer to discuss the power standards and the big, really, uh, bigger picture standards that are most essential that maybe didn't get a remediation. It's not necessarily didn't get to it, but we were fortunate to, as far as we were, March thirteenth. But those things that they would have spent time remediating much further and then that back into the next grade levels, perfect. And, and you know, to keep layering those in, inspiring them back to that content.
If, if I could, another comment, I heard, you know, different, it's less concerning, I guess. You know, my child's getting so far, become. And what we say is, become a group. I could already have had the same situation in the nation. So, so there are no, we're behind anybody else. And in fact, the property will forever end their work for seven weeks in. And in some ways, what we miss, we're sending hours per test and practice test and raw help, the symptoms, get it, get it, help up to take tests. And that, we didn't have to do this year. That's a lot of time, but it might be replaced. That's an interesting point to move.
So we're planning to, when they come in, then we're already planning professional development, one, our, so the teachers know how to use it. But we've also hooked up with other regional reps, uh, yesterday, uh, where they have been through the ones sharing with us what pitfalls were when they went through it. We'll give you what we have, what we learned through it to help our staff jump a little bit of that gap. It may happen that didn't know that at the time. So we're gonna work with them upfront, know how to do that, but also creating, she's talking to units, or creating units in which I'm arts and mail, but showing the folders on the backside that they can work together and create, uh, information and content that you can go in and say, I'm teaching this. I can click on a button and add it to my section or one of the sign-up to kids. So I wouldn't have to, I'll recreate something because someone's already created that, show them how we can make that public to each other that people can't see, but we can, as teachers, can go in and say, oh, that's a great resource that has, yeah, that. I'm gonna click on that, that is not. So that I'm not always creating everything, trash. So that's gonna be about training.
And I have, so it's, and I, that, uh, survey I shared, the figures from, uh, P E what, what, what happened to parents dealing with home? Here's what we, they, they, they need help. They're crying for help.
The closure is not something of what they should expect. So we've already started the technology support center for parents and for students. They include both online and direct support technology service. And we've got training guys, we've got troubleshooting guys, and we've got members that can call with that information that they can ask and respond. But you're right, that's a key word.
So the one thing that, thank, Chris Ford, I doubt that is myself up here, and I was a physician, is that we do communicate, but the way that we need to communicate through a virtual online, that is totally different. And it's very important. So that's one of the things that was high priority for us when, out looking around this as well. We didn't wanna have people wanting to be in multiple systems because we wanna make it easy. Dr. Johnson spoke earlier that if you sign in and see your students, uh, let's say Karen's son didn't do an assignment, it'd be set up that if he doesn't do his assignment, it even lost the parent. The parent will go in and click on today and see exactly what they had in class and what they needed to do. Um, also.
I was just gonna back the fact of the day.
We get all excited because we've been doing this for a month.
Yes.
Yes.
And apparently, and the teachers can also, let's say that, uh, Marty's gonna assign something for a week. They can see everything that's been assigned to that student throughout the week. It shows items that are due so that student doesn't get everything on a Thursday. They don't get everything on a Tuesday. So a teacher can plan, say, why I want to assign, because they are pretty heavy on the SD. So let's, let's move this to have them have it due by Friday and have it due on Friday. So they can set due dates, they can create things ahead of time and make you do it in order. So you have to do item number one, after you do number, item number one, then it will release item number two that they weren't able to see. So there's lots of things that we didn't have capability to do that we will now, but we'll have to train them, how to do that.
Isn't that, has something else? Is this, this is why I asked about contracts? Sure, okay. Um, teacher contracts have already been signed and returned and yet they are not a hundred percent sure, as are any of us, exactly what we're returning to and no guarantee of what that initial return can morph into, good or bad. So how are we handling that? Is there some kind of a deadline once the plan is finalized? And is there some kind of timeframe that they have to notify us as to whether or not that's a plan and a condition they can work with and under? What, what have they got there?
Okay, and I'll, I'll answer this and then we're asking, so, I think, you know, for a bit longer. So the contract and the process, those are getting as well. So it's, the teachers have signed their contract, they're committed to it. Now, in terms of labor law, there are allowances for coaches or compromising, cannot in terms of work. So what our survey will do then is identify, the first employees have a compromising, uh, situation. It may be their own health, it may be they're here for another, uh, maybe here for a sick, uh, or sick parent. So such laws have been a medical reading, right? Roughly twelve weeks, they, they need using their leave and someone. Um, it may be that, um, childcare is an issue and there's a lot of stairs with the emergency acts that we have, they will be prepared in two weeks to make a renegance for childcare, but they will, or some who are just afraid to come back at a dark, long, fine reason, and so they will need to resell, uh, their positions. So we have the survey, it's, it's set to go out shortly. Or they, uh, will have those questions. Are we planning to return as, as you're expected to? Maybe we have a compromising situation, which at least is the category, keeping all of that confidential. You can share that. It can work through with principals. So for example, we have a teacher that had a compromised immune system because of cancer. Our plan is if that teacher is willing to be a virtual teacher for home, we wanna keep them, we wanna employ them in that context. So we've just gotta work through teachers anymore. Um, but again, if it's somebody's just a pregnant, pregnant, or under these conditions or this time, then, then also definitely would need to design their position.
In what time?
There is no timeframe, is that? Well, because June fifteenth is when they can get a loan contract. So they are a very common rate with us. But we're gonna work with them to be sure that they're, they're safe and that we're following all, within our laws.
So see, and regularly, they could come back to school under the new plan and a couple of weeks in feel like, you know, if this just doesn't feel safe or right for me, I'm not seeing enough children wearing masks or there are too many running noses and sneezes or whatever the case may be, and resigning once the year has commenced.
Yes. And you know, we, we can't, we're under conditions, so I don't feel safe. Which is all the reasons I'm, so we're the ones that answer this.
Oh, one more question. This, another question on a calendar, and then I have a lot of, to, to, so. I support the calendar, I think that makes sense. And I will say, as a V S B, we're now listening to Marty's, for their education. And we was encouraging school divisions, uh, get them to start the Labor Day, move that up and start earlier because we don't have, we don't have to stop it. We have to register, but it's much as other years. In some ways, given.
And we would still have a month after we go into phase three in Virginia to assess the health situation. Yes?
That's right.
So we start phase three on July first. So we have that timeframe to see if we follow in the footsteps of some of our illustrious states in our union. And go up or continue to go down. So that will then provide yet another potential morph to that situation. But at least there's enough timeframe to kind of get a sense of that, I guess.
Yeah, the document here has, this is a, uh, page nine. That's another number, phase three, of course. It's what, to be determined.
Right.
So our technical data base is pretty beyond the next phase. Or what, yeah, let me do, we'll start, we'll not be asking, we need to just, it's one, federal protections. At the very earliest, January, plus twenty-one.
No, all of our choices.
Right.
I have one last question, and this is about transportation. And it's a question we got by email. I think we all got it. Was there any consideration made to doing, um, doing the breakup of, of the kids and who comes on what day geographically versus by last name? Because you would still solve the problem of family members going on the same day and you might minimize some of your transportation expense or be able to move more kids if you did it geographically versus by alphabet, by last name.
The challenge is that, um, we have, we have to transport as many pre-K five babies from here. And they're coming every day, so that, that room is pretty much gonna settle around. So, well, we've, we've thought about having to consider things like that. It doesn't seem feasible from a practical standpoint. The, the other limitations we have, the other limitation we have, one of the others, is that the system, the software transportation system basically takes the student's addresses and then builds the route from it. It doesn't work like you might think logically it would work. So it just, it's, it's kind of a automated system. And then what transportation does is they go in there and manually adjust them. And we're pushing up against a timeframe. That's one of the reasons, you know, we wanna try to get through it in terms of starting to get those routes planned.
Well, I thought, one, one other thing that it might address is, I understood what you were saying earlier about a kinderbärner going to school at four different times because there's different people going on four different days. That might actually help that a little bit because it might be a kinderbärner going three out of forty, so they know they have one early day during the week, or one because it's geographical, it's not a thought. But it's, it's just a thought, and if you've considered it, you've considered it.
Yeah, but it doesn't, they're trained on us. So Tuesday, that route is there. And you're over here, if you understand.
I don't.
If, if Mr. Paul now with us are coming today and that's one. You gotta go through, we started with the map of population distribution. And then talking about how that would work, it basically works kind of as a circular equation that anybody who's within the circle is how the route is now, the circle, so.
So that, the geographical, we were just doing middle and high schoolers who were coming by alphabet on certain days would be more feasible, but because we're including elementary school students who come four days a week into that same bus route, that's where the conundrum comes from.
And far, but also there is, there are things that overlap. So like in the fourth, there are, there are four buses. And those buses pick up those elementary units on the line, they're all going from the line. So again, if you were to do a route one day that was this, and another day that was that, you would be doubling your mind because you would be replicating the trace over the same parameter.
Any other questions, or one of the first? Dr. Johnson, we're gonna do, uh, the calendar draft, you sort of covered that.
Yeah. Still, the problem is looking at what was, I can't cover that, it's probably why it's, I didn't understand. And then, um, this is. This was a question that was asked, and I wanted to ask it again and get the answer. Well, why not just, what about starting in a neighborhood? So when we moved to New Orleans, Caroler, we moved our pay system for ten months employees, we shifted it by a month. Usually, when we started after Labor Day, a teacher's first payday of the year, the mid-year, was the end of September. When we shifted our pay, we're the first payday at the end of August. So if we were to shift to a post-Labor Day starter, we would need to withhold thirteen months of teacher payroll or not pay them until the end of September. That is a difficult challenge. So if you have a boy that has health insurance with us, we have to write a check for the health insurance and receive their payment. Which is, yeah, if, if, yes. Second thing is that to be eligible for the E R S contribution for August, you must be working in August. So then, generally, that's an E R S contribution for a teacher that may be preparing for retirement duty or food and welfare. The second thing is a health insurance requirement is that if boys are not entitled insurance to come back, must be working the first working day of the month to be eligible for health insurance. Middle boys who are coming on board to get our health insurance must be working the first day of, the first day of this year is August first. So middle boys must come back prior to August first to be eligible for health insurance in August. Returning employees must be here by August third, first of the track. Must be here by August third to get health insurance. Must be hereby August 3rd to get health insurance benefits for the month of August. And so again, while we look at the major store, number one, we want to get that as soon as possible. So we get as much time as possible of our potential health re, re, uh, where the dollar returns. Um, but also concerns as the employer over those employment and offensive things that people are very common to love. Um, so I did want to acknowledge that we did look at that. Um, so essentially just shifting the first day of school from August 4th to August 17th. I would have known that we, we were, or last year, we were one of the first districts to start in the state. So we're still an early start. Two, we employ those, employ, employ employees. Uh, and three, we still achieve, uh, um, the requisite number of hours a day to maximize instructional time.
And this calendar keeps one of the popular things about the early story, which is you finish first semester by December. And I said, kind of a lot of high school friends who didn't make the logic relating on that. Also students who could maybe go home to the community college in January. I like that.
The only other thing that is, that I, what I was going to refer to is if you have other questions. What do you think these ideas, who's had this lift and agree with you to help? And I'm going to offer her, rather than stand to talk into the mic, I'm happy to sit the audience as live and you can sit in my chair.
Hold on, we have to sit in your chair. What do you think of this? Give me my six feet off.
I have one more. Do you have any of that there? I was going to, that's a couple of them.
I need a friend.
You won't close. You have to, to wrap up the, the young women. We were given a template from the state that was bottom. And, uh, and that template, it had, um, six different categories. How to reopen, preventing behaviors that reduce the spread of, um, maintaining healthy environments, maintaining healthy operations, protecting our vulnerable individuals, and then planning to close it if we have to. All, all of those, and you saw that in the plan that there was somewhere done to see some thing materials was under every category. So I'm certainly not going to read this to you word for word. And, um, I'm going to give you the highlights and then you can ask some questions as you now preview this. Now, these highlights aren't many of the same categories, okay? Um, so always with everything, you have to show the training of your staff. So we want to have expensive training in our department of staff, who knows, a lot newer school nurses. Who will go over everything from washing your hands, covering your calls, our face mask, how properly, here's some terminology, oh, terminology, baby. Donning and Dolphy are PPE. There's some new terminology, PPE, which is our personal protective. So we'll have training on that. And then that training goes forward for the teachers into the classroom. Making sure that students don't have, uh, or really as a problem. We have to, uh, do all of that training with our, with our staff. Um, communication regarding our requirements, our reopening requirements is already on in place. We have several committees that have been up and running and Dr. Johnson's already explained all that. We use the school messenger. We use all of our social media, email, and then schools and websites. So to keep everybody in the community informed. Um, school personnel will be using personal protective equipment, PPE. They will have access to gloves. They'll have face masks. They'll have face shield. It's like they can maintain their six feet distance from their students. They don't have to wear their face mask or their face shield. Um, but once I'm sitting down and assigned to the student, they're going to know how to use some personal protective equipment. But often we provide, um, a division. Our office spaces will now have sneeze guard just to the plastic things and we're going to put our cameras. So as people do come in, um, we will have that protection for our office staff. Um, students will be, you know, wearing face masks when they're physical distancing cannot be maintained. Physical distancing and face mask, if you read CDC guidelines, it was all about. That is what's going to help us prevent the spread of that. So that's going to be our driving force on the term. Uh, there will be signage. There's going to be signage on the front door. There's going to be signage everywhere throughout the school reminding everyone of the PPE requirements and conditions that you need to have. There'll be hand sanitizers and disinfectant stations. Um, that a teacher will have on office disinfectant that they can use to disinfect us. If, uh, students come in and out of classroom, um, there'll be hand sanitizer as well as in that classroom. Um, custodians then of course have the whole entire manual protocol and have a clean and disinfectant. They'll be following that. We'll be deep cleaning the evenings of the whole space. Bus drivers will be doing their disinfecting runs after every run. So they're going to be doing disinfecting after every run. Um, I think the biggest thing that we can ask of our parents and our community is something, um, that, you know, we are, we're always preaching, I want to send your kid to school. Send your kid to school. We want to say careful. If they're sick, we'll take them to the nurse. This is the opposite, very opposite message. Keep your kids home if they're sick. Don't send them to school if they're sick. Because we don't know what that sickness is. Um, if you've been reading any of the material on the COVID, it looks exactly like a lot like. Let's look at strep, all the regular diseases that we get, all the regular sicknesses that we have to deal with. So if the kid comes to the clinic and says he has a cough, that means he has COVID. It just means he has a cough. I have to assess what else does the child have. I'm going to ask him some more questions. Did you have to come into contact with someone if you missed something? Or tested positive? So I want to, you know, to kind of dispel the fear that way. Because just because the kid walks down the hall and is coughing doesn't mean he's dead. He's had a cough. Allergies will be very hard to determine. So there's a lot and we have a lot of training with our commercial nurses going on right now. Um, we need to talk about monitoring our health. We are going to ask the student, their revival meeting, we're going to be giving them a checklist. And then they go through this checklist at home before they come to school or, or generally, for instance. If you enter yes to any of those things, you need to stay home. You need to stay home and at family, then tomorrow go through your checklist. And if you enter no, you can come to school. And we'll meet again. Um, again, encourage you to feel to stay home if you were, if, if they have it exposed. Um, they need to hopefully report that to us or depending on the parent to do that, to report that to us. Because that's hip hop. You know, I can't comply that information. You have to tell me that information. So, um, and then of course, if you have an exposure, exposure, use self quarantine for 14 days. Um, there's very specific ways for you to come back. You can't come back after the quarantine. If you have not had a fever for 72 hours without using any kind of medication. If your symptoms have improved and if you have at least 10 days of panels since your first symptom appeared. If you can answer yes to all those things, you can come back. With 14 day quarantine, which you do. Other information that's located in there, we can have no more than 50 people in any one place. So I can't have any more than 50 kids, of course, like rooms. And I have the social distancing is all very important. Um, visitors will, will not be in my house because the building will need to have appointments. You need to be very careful if you're hiding in and while they're coming into the building. Volunteers will be for necessary duties only. If I got a big project and I want somebody to come in, then I can come in and volunteer. Um, need to make sure that they, with their checklist as well, can answer those questions. Of course, sick leave policies are available through our HR. He's already gone over the emergency family medical leaf. That's a light coming report. In our clinics, uh, we, we have our clinics outlined in two parts. You have isolation areas in all of our clinics. Some are located within the clinic, some are located in the, in the ring of the staff clinic. What the student does, coming in, they're yell, they go over on the six time selection area. Right, five panels, they'll be together, the rest of the panels, and then they get picked up. Um, this is another thing that's going to be very important for our community to help us with. And that is identifying at least one person that we can call that will come and get this child if he is sick. Because we do have students who will have stayed in the clinic all day long because nobody gave them up. We have to have the community to help us identify that one that will come and pick that child up. And again, identify on their emergency contact list when they do their registration. Full closures. If we have a positive case reported to us, that's reported to Dr. Johnston, who is in conversation with Lord Richard's husband, Dr. Ray. And then they determine, the health determines the course of action with our consultation. We do everything in this model with what the health just tells us. They're the ones that help us make that decision. And if you put like an overview of everything that you're reading, you know, more and over. And we have a specific question, sort of, session.
Oh, will we be taking the temperature of people entering the building in the morning?
No.
It's a screening. It's not.
It's a, it's a spell screener for right now. And that's what is being, that is the recommendation that's coming out of the DOE from, from, from the first quarter. If we do self-checking, we are compliant. We're not going to stay up to be able to check. I mean, there's a lot can be so long in the city.
It's just trusting. As I was going to say, it's trusting the honesty of a lot of people, of a lot of people.
The challenge is a lot of kids are not, will not display a fever even though they're, they're contagious. So it, it can be a false sense of security too.
Really, because it really, you do need more information than that. It's a fever today.
And this isn't, and that's the only way to do it. It's the way they do TV testing. Now, if you go in and you answer all the screening tests, right, you don't get the stick. Whereas we used to get the stick, you know, constantly. So it's, it, it is the, it's the method.
Now, if it comes to the point where we feel we need to do this, then we need to drill the pipeline for it. But right now, we feel like we're in compliance with the self-check.
I can take that too, with you.
Your workers appreciate that.
This Donning and Dolphing.
Yes, new vocabulary.
Oh, can you tell me?
Donning and Dolphing is how to properly put on and take off your personal protective. You have to give athletic consulting.
Then I do have a question. It may have stuck us. So for the kids who are using their masks during transition but not needing them in the classroom, are they going to have a place to put them?
Probably more often than not.
Yeah, I, I, I saw somewhere that, that it was almost like a, like a plastic plate from the dollar store. And it was, it was on a kid's desk so that if they took their mask off, there was only one place that it could go. Spreading germs more. And also, and, and it may have been a photograph from another country. No, I think, but they also each had their own individual trash can. So 99 cent trash can at their desks so that they didn't have to walk across the room every time they had something to throw away. Like if they had, um, a snack at their desk, they had a place to put it right there. So just a couple of things of us.
More things to think about.
Cheap, cheap things.
Did you see the picture, I think, from Japan where the elementary school students have wings on to help their team circle, be different?
We could do the full, the whole thing of the question.
Almost the first time that we've come to the office, was this, this is a big, big problem. Is that we also feel wrong actually. And there is, it's a little, it turns you around down. It just pulls your man, us, boy, you're not.
I could give a little strap on. I have to speak with them, make a couple of your voice.
No other questions, right? What other questions do you have?
I was just kidding.
Despite all that, you have those video questions, no question.
How important are you to your career?
I'm a day old, I'm a day old kid.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnston, did you have anything else to share?
Little.
Is that any more?
Well, and I think the idea was basically to have this meeting and sort of have a general consensus among the board so that you can now survey the public about whether they intend to send their kids, whether they intend to use transportation. Is that right? Okay, so, so do we generally agree with, even though we're not going to vote on it, the calendar change? Do all board members generally agree? Because that, that helps with everything else. I think it'd be impossible to do, work. You all have done an amazing job. Teachers are going to do an amazing job. But we have to, at the time, to be as best prepared as possible. And I think those two weeks could potentially make the difference between a feeling more towards the end of March versus a feeling of really moving forward. And we really don't want to go backward. So if that two weeks, if you all feel that that two weeks can make that proficiency noticeable in the interaction with our students, then I think it's important that we give at least that two weeks.
Very simple, you know.
Thank you, Miss Black.
That's not. Very important to be like, uh, those dudes in, 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 in. There is a preference. I mean, it hasn't gone out of this. The other thing, I'm saying. Thinking about this in my day before I, I hear. Even if, if it's bad, in the, in the, in the, I can't recall, we let me get to the new rate. Now, I think I do want to very out of respect that, to make sure that these help. And then, as I sit here in this meeting, I want you guys to know, and I say you guys, that's interesting. I'll be here now, but, and the law of our community feels the same way about me. They trust you and they want you to do, uh, the right thing as far as your kids are concerned. And, uh, that's the tremendous, uh, responsibility. Most of them are not going to get on the ground and say, Steve, break your, that they want to make sure that your kids get the best education as possible. And I appreciate all you guys have done so far to, to make sure that that's.
That was it.
That was what it is. Then, I mean, thank y'all. I just saw, we're going to hope this session with D S B on the trucks and going to escape. Everyone's going twice. The media's adjourned. Thank you all.